I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. On my call to order, the April twenty-fourth City Council meeting. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda under consent agenda. Item number six, I'd like to add item K supplemental bill list.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, we have an agenda. Item four point oh, presentations, twenty twenty-two audit presentation, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, to present the two thousand twenty-two financial statement audit is Brad Foltasek from Abdo. Everyone should have received the financial statement along with the management letter and his presentation for tonight. With that, I'll hand it over to Brad.
Thanks, Mike, honorable mayor, council members, thanks for having me tonight. So I am here to present the audit financial statements for two thousand twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. What, like Mike said, you had the financial statements in your packet, the presentation in your packet. The presentation is just a high-level summary within the statements themselves. So that's what I'll go through tonight, it's just the results from the audit, the result of the audit itself and then financial results from your different funds. So I'll start going through that. So the first page just kind of outlines the introduction. First, I'll go through our opinion and our responsibility. We'll look at the general fund results, other governmental fund, other governmental fund results, enterprise funds, and then key performance indicators where we compare some comparisons with your city to other cities of similar size throughout the county as well as throughout the state of Minnesota. So first slide here, audit results. And we are issuing an unmodified or a clean opinion on your financial statements, which is the opinion you're looking for when you have a financial statement audit performed. We're saying that we believe everything in the financial statements is stated accurately, materially accurate, and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The other report we issue is the Minnesota Union Compliance Report. The state auditor's office requires us to go through a series of checklists as part of our audit process during the financial statement audit. They want us to test specific statutes to make sure you're following them throughout the year. So things like are you depositing your money in proper accounts? Are your funds insured appropriately with FDIC and then collateral? If you're issuing bonds, make sure you issue that the appropriate way. Contract and bidding, so if you're bidding out any contracts, there's specific steps you have to take in those things. And they, we test those as part of our process as well. So we are not reporting any non-compliance with the items they request us to look at either. So clean reports on both the financial statements and the compliance letter. The next slide, the general fund fund balances. So you, the city does, has adopted a fund balance policy to have reserves at forty percent, or a minimum forty percent reserves in the general fund. That's that black line at the bottom. Your reserves are at that yellow line, that's your fund balance. So at year end, you had fifty-six point nine percent of fund balance. So you're staying above that forty percent, a consistent gap there throughout the years presented. So you're doing a good job budgeting and monitoring that budget throughout the year to keep that, or to keep that, your fund balance above the minimum there. The top line is your budget for each of the years presented. So your fund balance is based on forty percent of, or your policy is based on forty percent of your following year's budget. So that's where that black line is coming from, and again, you're just under that fifty-seven percent. Next slide is the general fund results. So looking at budgeted amounts compared to your actuals. First column here is your budget compared to your actual, then you have your variances on the far right there. On a six million, six over six million dollar budget, your revenues were about seventy thousand dollars off, so real close in all your revenue categories. Expenditures, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars off. So again, a five and a half million dollar budget being off a hundred and eighty thousand is really close. Majority of that was in your general government department, which was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars under budget this year. Then you had transfers out, you transferred six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars out to other funds to support their activities. Capital, a lot of that is capital related, for an increase in fund balance of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, finishing at three point, almost three point seven million dollars in fund balance. So general fund had a good year. The general fund revenues by type, so this chart shows where your revenues are coming from in your general fund. Most of you, or all of you probably know that majority of the, or your general fund is supported by tax revenues. So you can see those are the bars on the left there, and it has steadily increased each year as your tax levy increases, your collections are increasing. And then all the other categories down below with intergovernmental charges and then other category. Next slide is same thing with the expenditures, where you're spending your money, the general government department, public safety, public works, culture in Iraq. See, the majority of her, the highest area you're spending, your expenditures are in the public safety area. And each one of these categories here have stayed pretty consistent from year to year. So that's what we're looking for is consistency, no big jumps from one year to the next. In the other category, you saw that had a kind of a spike in two thousand twenty-one. You did, this area includes transfers out, and you transferred just over five hundred thousand dollars that year above your normal transfers to pay off a bond early. So, next slide relates to capital project funds. So these are funds where you're putting, setting money aside for either equipment purchases or capital projects. So here you've got Street Capital, Hundred and Eighty-First Street, Sand Hill Parkway, so all these different projects here are listed. What we're looking for, or looking at here is if there's anything in a deficit. So you can see the Hundred and Eighty-First Street and the Sand Hill Parkway. Hundred and Eighty-First Street was a new project and finished the year with three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar deficit. There will be some funding in the coming year to support that. The Sand Hill Parkway Fund, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar deficit, that's related to, there was MSA funding that came into this fund. Because you received the funding in advance of when the legislature allocated it to you, we can't recognize it as revenue until that year passes. It's a time, it's a time thing. So you do have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cash in the fund, it's just we were not able to recognize all that revenue until you allocate it. So that fund will be fine. The non-major ones there, these are just not, doesn't, don't have as much activity as those top three. Those are all doing well, they all have positive cash or fund balances in those, so. Next slide is your special revenue funds. The special revenue funds are funds that you either have a committed or a restricted revenue source in them. So just three funds, the recycling, HR, and EDA fund in this category. With these, we're just making sure the, we just want to see that the, those revenue sources are meeting your expenditures. So you had increases in each one of these funds for two thousand twenty-two, so definitely we're meeting that requirement. Then our last governmental funds before our enterprise funds is our debt service funds. So you have two bonds outstanding that are being supported with taxes and taxes. You've got the two thousand fifteen revenue bond and the water revenue note, just over fifteen million, about fifteen and a half million dollars of bonds outstanding at year end. You do have positive cash in each one of these and total assets of positive one point oh eight million. So these funds are, again, being supported by tax revenues coming in to make those debt service payments. So again, what we're looking for here is making sure those cash balances aren't going into a deficit. You're collecting enough to pay your debt service on each of those years. Then we get into the water fund. So these enterprise funds are funds where they operate more like a business, where you have charges for services to support the activity. The top chart here is look, is the, basically the cash receipts and cash dispersments in the water fund. So taking out any depreciation or anything non-cash related. Well, we weren't looking at, are your operating receipts enough to support your dispersments? So the darker orange color there are the receipts in each of these years, and the lighter orange color is the cost. So each one of these years, you definitely are, you're collecting enough to support your costs. The lower chart is just cash balances by year. And see, you've steadily been increasing your cash balance in this fund. We do have, and all that additional cash above that minimum line there, and that's a line that we have. We've, as a firm, decided, we put that as a gauge. We don't want, we wouldn't want to see your cash go below that in what is that, it's fifty percent of your next year's operating costs. So we wouldn't want to see that. So anything above that is really available for capital purchases or capital projects in the water fund. Sewer fund on the next one, or next page, same thing here. You can see there's another part of the cost line or cost bar that was added, those are debt payments. So again, we want to make sure that your receipts are meeting both your dispersments plus your debt costs for the year. And each one of the years except two thousand nineteen have been meeting that. Because of that, you have seen a steady increase in your cash in this fund as well. Ice Arena Fund, same chart, kind of a break even fund though. Here, instead of generating a ton of cash, or not a ton of cash, but generating cash, you break even here. And you can see on the lower chart there, your cash has been staying pretty steady. So you're collecting enough to support and maintain your cash balance. So this fund is also doing well. We have internal service funds. So these, your internal service funds are made up of your equipment replacement fund and your capital, or compensated absences fund. So these funds you're setting aside for an equipment piece, you're setting aside for equipment purchases in the future. In the compensated absences, you're setting that money aside for retirements or those types of things. Cash balances on the next page for the last three years, kind of broken down by the different types of funds we just talked about. Finished two thousand twenty-two with an increase up to eleven million dollars cash investments. Then again, key performance indicators. So these are the, we talked about kind of comparing your city to other cities of similar size. So the darker orange color is the class-three cities across the state, which you're a part of, and then the other cities in Anoka County is that lighter orange color. You are the black line in each one of these categories. So the first one, we look at tax rates, which you're slightly under your peer groups in this category, but really close to kind of where everybody else is sitting. Same thing with taxes per capita, slightly a lot lower than your peer groups, but kind of right in line with others of similar size. The debt piece, this looks at all your long-term debt outstanding and just divided by the population, debt per capita. You can see as far as other class-two cities across the state, you are slightly lower, but then others in the Anoka County are slightly higher. So right in the middle there as far as the debt outstanding you have. And then the next chart on here is how much your, how much debt service, how much you're paying on debt service as a percent of your current expenditures. You're at just under seventeen percent or sixteen percent for two thousand twenty-two, and your peer groups are kind of where that fourteen, or thirteen, fourteen percent range. So slightly higher as far as debt service or payments. But both, I think, still really fairly low in that category. The last chart is the current expenditures per capita and then capital expenditures per capita. So the current expenditures is just not looking, taking out any of the debt service payments or any capital purchases, those types of things, and kind of your day-to-day operating activities, and comparing that to other cities and their day-to-day operating activities. So you can see your, the cost of your day-to-day type operations is less than what your peer groups are spending in those categories. And then capital, that's going to kind of fluctuate from year to year. You can see in two thousand twenty-one, you had a big capital year, so you spent all your ARPA dollars. And then two thousand twenty-two, now you back down to kind of where you have been in the previous four years, three years. So all in all, I think the city's sitting in good shape, let's turn around and take any questions.
Any questions from the council? I'd just like to say that Mike and Brad, you both did an outstanding job, I mean, really, really thorough, so thank you. We need a motion here to.
Accept.
You know, with the conclusions of the report, staff recommends that council approve the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-nine, accepting the two thousand twenty-two annual financial report for operations and activities of the city of East Bethel for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two in direction to submit the report to the state auditor.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Do the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, if you'll give us just one minute to change computers here.
Sure, yep. You ready, Nate? Item B, Coon Lake Regional Park Long Range Plan.
Yeah, read this one, go ahead. Karen Blaska, Parks Planner with Anoka County Parks, will present the Coon Lake Regional Park Long Range Plan. Coon Lake County Park is approximately one hundred and ten acres and is located on the east end of Coon Lake in Columbus Township. The park was approved for regional park status in two thousand twenty-one, and as part of that designation, a long-range plan must be in place before the county is eligible for metro regional park funding. The East Bethel Park Commission provided comments to the draft master plan at their December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, and have reviewed the attached long-range plan at their April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting. The East Bethel City Council, along with other local communities, will be asked to submit a resolution of support for this project. And with that, I will let Karen start, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Karen Blaska, I'm the park planner for Anoka County. I am here to talk to you about the Coon Lake Long Range Plan. As Nate had mentioned, we got approval from the Met Council to add it to the regional system. And so we are conducting this long-range plan in order to be eligible for future funding. So the report is actually forty-two pages. Luckily, there's only twelve slides. So, as Nate mentioned, Coon Lake sits on the west side of, Coon Lake County Park sits on the west side of Coon Lake. And the long-range plan looks at a variety of items that the PowerPoint will go through. So if you can switch to the next slide. So first off is the boundaries and acquisition. The boundary is shown in green on the map. The yellow parcels, actually, we missed those, they had just come up for sale and we were not able to pick them up. But we are still including them in the long-range plan. If the opportunity ever presents itself, we would like to acquire them to expand the park boundary. For our stewardship plan, that looks at all the revenues and expenses for the park. So all the O and M information, all the revenue, how the revenues are generated through shelter rentals, programs, et cetera. We do get help from the Met Council for the O and M. Currently, I think legislature, legislative statute says, my council's supposed to provide forty percent of costs for O and M. We're really only getting nine percent. So the majority of the expenses for the park is coming through our tax levy. The next section is demand forecast. And so for this, we look at population growth, the demographics, how things are changing. And considering by two thousand fifty, one out of five people are going to be over the age of sixty-five. Forty-four percent of the population is expected to be either Black, Indigenous, or people of color. Fifty-three percent of regional residents are under the age of eighteen are expected to be from the Black, Indigenous, people of color demographics. So things are changing, and the county is expected to grow seventeen percent. So we kind of look at all that and figure out what we can do to help make the park more welcoming and inclusive to all. So looking at the development concept, we've kind of divided it out into a few sections. So for the entrance improvements, we know traffic is an issue there with the parking along Lexington. We've worked with the highway department and think we can get a right turn lane put in for that entrance. We are planning on wiping it, including a, hopefully including a digital type sign that will monitor parking spaces. So when the lot is full, it will show up on the sign at the entrance. So if the parking lot's full, people can just go right on by to the other boat launch. Roads and parking, obviously, we'll upgrade all the roads and the parking lots. The public access, we'll redo the boat launch there, reconstruct that, add some aquatic invasive species, BMPs. So it's easier for people to clean, drain, and dry before they leave the lake to help protect, protect it. Trail improvements, we're proposing additional paved trails throughout the park, but we're also proposing additional natural surface trails throughout the park. There is a snowmobile trail that goes through there, and that will remain. We'll kind of avoid interrupting that at all with the future development. If you have not heard, the maintenance facility located there, it's kind of a shack right now. So our highway department does have plans to rebuild that facility. I think they're planning on twenty twenty-four to start that construction, if all goes well. And then we, Parks will have some space there too, so our maintenance staff can office out of there during the summer. The beach and picnic areas, when we worked with the public to get their feedback on it, it was shade, more shade. And then the conflicts between swimmers and boaters. So what we are doing for the beach is, in addition to planting more trees, we're actually planning on adding some shade structures. And then for the conflict between the boaters coming in to, you know, the beach, their boats, to use the park, to remove that conflict between them and swimmers, we're proposing to add like a docking system, so they can dock their boats away from the beach, away from the swimmers, and then come in the park that way. So kind of trying to separate some of those uses. So all the plans we have, it is going to be about five point five million dollars. That is planned over the next twenty years. So I think we'll see some improvements, you know, in the next few years, some of the smaller items in the next few years. The larger stuff is probably going to be five to ten years, and then some of the other stuff, ten to twenty years, so. Also looking at conflicts, which I kind of talked about, the swimming and boating situation and the traffic control, and look at surrounding land uses, which really isn't an issue for the park at all. Public services, the road, Lexington Road, isn't really within the park, but we are including it in there just so everybody can be aware that we do have plans to address that. The next slide, please, operations. We do have ordinances that regulate it from two thousand eighteen. I do expect those to be updated in the next couple of years. But we do work closely with our park services unit, the county sheriff, the DNR, on education and enforcement in the park. And then we do estimate our O and M costs for the park to be approximately fifty thousand dollars annually. Partner engagement is kind of what we're doing now. We've worked with the Parks Commission at the local cities and gotten a lot of good information there that we have put into the plan. The next slide, public engagement. This park, when we asked for comments from people, we got comments. This is probably the most public input we have received on a plan ever. It was a lot to go through, but I think we have a good solid plan because of it too. So we reached over about twenty-five thousand people, actually interacted with about forty-five hundred people. So it was a lot to try and compile and put together and analyze everything. So it took a while, but I think we did a good job. We worked closely with the Lake Improvement Association and a few other community groups. We also have to look at equity and basically figure out who benefits the most from our improvements, who benefits the least, and what we can do to make sure all voices are heard when we're doing our planning. What we know is we have a long ways to go for establishing good connections and good relationships with Black, Indigenous, people of color populations. So county's got work to do. We also have to have kind of a public awareness campaign ready to go when this is approved, so we can let everybody know. Nikki Greenwell in our office, she is our marketing coordinator, and she has done a phenomenal job through social media, Facebook, and Instagram, getting the word out to let everybody know. Of course, accessibility, the intent is to exceed minimum accessibility requirements. So for trails, you know, the boat launch, the playground, we're intending to be all-inclusive, things like that. So, and then the last section is natural resources, and so that just kind of goes over what we have and how we're managing it. So we've got prairie, there's wetlands, there's woodlands, and so I work closely with our natural resource specialists to determine a plan for restoring and improving those habitats. So that is a snippet, quick summary of the plan. I can answer any questions you have. Otherwise, the county is looking for a resolution of support from the council. And after, if you provide that, we will then bring this through the county board and then to the Met Council eventually.
Any questions from the council? So are you guys done taking public comment then on all this, or is there, you're still?
You know what, I'm never done taking public comments, so if you have questions.
Well, I'm just saying, we have booster days coming up in July, I don't know if that's too late or something, or you could have a booth.
There probably would be, but I will still take comments.
Okay, okay.
Because we can always add them in.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
If it's not too late, we have a town hall meeting on Wednesday.
Oh, sure.
Come up, come up there if you're looking for more engagement.
I actually have a Columbus meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash thirty, supporting Anoka County's efforts to redevelop this park.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second, discussion.
Thank you for doing all this work and helping to improve this area and the community.
It's exciting. It'll be nice when it's done.
Do the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen, thank you very much.
Item C, Anoka County Sheriff Report. Mr. Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. March, we had a total of three hundred and fifty-seven calls for service in the city. Interestingly enough, we're within three reports of the month prior. So, very, very common over the last couple of months here to be around that number here. So, we were very consistent. We had fifty-four medicals, three assaults, one damage to property. Deputies made twenty-one arrests for miscellaneous violations. And our traffic enforcement efforts resulted in thirty-seven traffic citations, which is the highest monthly total we've had in three months. So, I think it's probably been a combination of warmer weather, some clearer roadways and things. So, we've gotten out there to do a little bit more traffic enforcement, which is nice to see. A few notable calls the past month. On the seventh of March, deputies were dispatched to a residence in the eleven-hundred block of two hundred and thirty-first Avenue on an assault. Remarks provided to our staff reported that a male had been assaulted with an axe handle. On arrival, the deputies located a male and several others who, excuse me, the male was bleeding from a three-inch laceration on the top of his head. They interviewed several people inside of the residence. This male reported being hit in the head during an argument inside of the home. After interviews were conducted, a lone male was placed under arrest for this offense and transported to our jail where he was booked for second degree assault. On the eighteenth of March, just before midnight, Deputy Madison was dispatched to a crash at sixty-five and two-twenty-ninth Avenue on a report of a vehicle that went into the ditch on its own. The reporting party who had called this in reported that they had seen the vehicle swerving all over the road prior to the crash. When Deputy Madison arrived, he spoke to the driver, who was not injured, but admitted to drinking several alcoholic beverages prior to driving. The driver was asked to perform standardized field sobriety test, but refused, stating that he would fail them anyway. The driver was arrested for DWI and transported to jail where he submitted to a DMT test, which resulted in a BAC of point two-five. The driver was charged with DWI and released to staff without incident. A second vehicle that had stopped to check on the driver of this one was also arrested for DWI in this incident by Deputy Sykes. So, basically, we had two drivers, both of which were impaired. One went into the ditch, the other that stopped was also arrested for DWI. On the twenty-third of March, at six forty-six AM, Deputy Adams was dispatched to a drunk driver in an anonymous, was called in by an anonymous reporting party near the area of Viking Boulevard and East Buffalo Boulevard. Deputy Adams waited in the area and located the vehicle traveling southbound in East Buffalo Boulevard near the fire station. Deputy Adams observed the vehicle driving erratically in its lane and saw it come to an abrupt stop at the stop sign controlling the intersection of East Buffalo Boulevard and Viking Boulevard Northeast. Deputy Adams stopped the vehicle and spoke to the driver, who was exhibiting signs of impairment. The driver admitted to using sleeping pills and having consumed vodka prior to driving. The driver was asked to perform standardized field sobriety testing, but also refused. He later submitted to a roadside PBT, which reported a value of point two-four. The driver was eventually arrested and later provided an evidentiary test, which resulted in a two-three blood alcohol concentration. Driver was charged with second degree DWI based on prior offenses, was also booked into Anoka County Jail. So, at the end of March, after going through these reports, we had a total of ten DWI arrests that were just in this city alone.
Just in March?
Just in, no, for the, for the entire year up until this point. So, a little bit higher than some of our other cities that we provide service to. So, the issue of concern for me, reading these reports throughout the month, was just the high blood alcohol concentration. These folks aren't, you know, that, that we're coming in contact with aren't O eights, they're not even one Os. We're in the twos. So, this is something of a concern for us at the sheriff's office. It's a great area of priority for us and a priority of our public safety service. So, we will always continue to enforce this. This is, this is not something that we have an option or use discretion on. So, please, as a reminder, we're looking out for these type of offenses. We've got a lot of saturation details out here coming, coming forward here as the spring progresses and as the year gets warmer. So, please use good judgment for everybody. If you need a sober ride, please call one, call for one and find one. And then please, as always, as I say at the end of my brief every month, please call us if you see anything, we're always there. So, appreciate the opportunity this month. So, I can stand for any questions if you have any.
Just as for comparison, if you, if you'd know, to get into the twos for blood alcohol. How much would say the average individual have to drink? How many beers would, does that take to put you into that?
Sure.
I, I know it's probably not an exact science, but.
Yeah, it is not an exact science. It's really dependent on physiology, you know, chemical makeup of what you're drinking, your physical fitness, what you've had to eat prior to. There's a number of different factors that really, really lead into how somebody, somebody can get to that level. How quick it is or the period of time, you know, how quick somebody burns it off. Metabolic rate, it has a lot to do with your physical characteristics, your biology and your, your physiology, if you will. So, how often you drink to that extent. You know, some of your other personal habits really are factors in how that's determined from a physical sense. So, I'm sorry, I don't have that science answer for you. But I think a good rule of thumb is, you know, if you have one drink, if you have a drop of alcohol, it's going to affect you at some level. The human body is not used to consuming alcohol at all, so you're always going to have some sort of an effect. So, please, I think is a good reminder for anyone, if you're going to be out for an extended period of time, please just call for a ride. And if you see anything, please call us because we'll come out there and deal with it as we see. So, see, we'll deal with it as we see fit. So, again, not, just no discretion on our part. If you're, if you're under or over the legal limit, you will be arrested. You know, that's our job, that's our public safety, and it's a priority for us, and it's a priority everywhere else in the state. So, we'll continue to hit it hard throughout the spring here.
With, now with the warmer weather approaching finally. What sort of crimes of opportunities do you typically see when the weather gets nice?
Yeah, another good question. We see a lot of thefts, and I think I've briefed it before in years past. We see a lot of thefts from property that's left out unattended overnight in folks' yards. East Buffalo is a, is a great community. A lot of folks have beautiful spreads of land and it's easy to leave stuff out. It's easy to not be able to monitor a property that size. And I, I think that we see a lot of thefts, folks walking around, you know, no streetlights in some places. Lots of crimes of opportunity as it pertains to theft, people taking things that don't belong to them. So, again, if you see anything, just call us, we're here all the time, and that's our job. We love coming out and speaking to people and making those community connections. We get to know our residents and landowners and things. So, we have a good crew in East Buffalo. A lot of the deputies that, that work in our city here are experienced, they know the lay of the land, they know a lot of our community members. So, I think keeping them in the loop, you know, communication is a two-way street. If you let us know, then we'll do what we can to get into those areas. And again, saturate areas that, that we've seen crime in, in the past. And I think that'll go a long way in providing that visual deterrent, having those squad cars in the, in the residential areas at all hours of the day are helpful. And our guys and gals that are working the street know that. We're always looking for that, that, that little tidbit of information that might break a big case or give us an idea of where we should be focusing our efforts, so.
Great, thank you.
I have a question on the traffic stops here.
Yes, sir.
We've gone from two fifty-five to four fifty-nine, that's two hundred plus. Is that just because of added deputies in the area or?
No, our, our numbers, personnel-wise, have stayed the same. You know, I think what you're, we're seeing here is probably an increase in the traffic due to roadways and things of that nature with the, with the roads being clear. Our folks are out there, we can make traffic stops a lot safer without having the fear of someone rear-ending us on sixty-five. We had that a year ago. We've also got some new folks that are hungry, they want to make a difference. And during the training evolution, when we're out on patrol, a lot of what we're teaching our new deputies is traffic enforcement. It's a huge part of our job, it's an expectation of our job. So, those folks are encouraged to repeat those activities, so over and over and over again. I think it's probably a combination of all of those factors. But I would anticipate those numbers to probably stay the same, about four fifty-five or even increase as the year goes on. When we get that warmer weather, when we're getting dispatched calls. So, a lot of those traffic stops might have an underlying story to them as well. So, we might have nine-one-one callers that have seen a vehicle that is driving erratically. So, we're getting a call for service out of that. We're also getting a traffic stop when the deputy gets in the area and, and, you know, conducts their investigative, their investigatory stop, if you will.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the council? Questions from our audience? Mr. Peters, thank you again for another month.
Thank you again, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is Fire Chief Rodney Sanal.
Good evening, councilman, Mr. Mayor. In the month of March, Fire Department responded to seventy-three calls. We responded to fifty-five medicals, five accidents, seven alarms, and one mutual aid to the town, Lynnwood Township. As of today, which is about an hour ago, we have responded to three hundred and three calls. That's forty-two more than last year. Right now, we have five members of our department that are going through Fire One, Fire Two, and Hazmat Class. This class is a hundred and sixty hours of hands-on and classroom in total. Plus, they are assigned to read and answer quizzes online. In addition to these five members, we also have three members that are taking Fire Instructor One and Fire Officer One Class. This is a hybrid class, which is online work and classroom work. These two classes together for Fire One and Officer One will be in a total of eighty hours. This is to get our officer pull-up to speed on classes they need to take. Both groups are required to then complete a state certification test. And once certified, they will continue to need, continue an education to meet the hours to keep these certifications. Also, now, this time of year, you need, you must get a burning permit to burn piles of brush. These can be obtained at City Hall. The hours you can burn are from six A, six PM to eight AM. The fire must be extinguished before you leave the burn site. The burnt permits must be available upon Fire Department request. If we get called out on your fire and we request a burn permit, you must produce it. Stuff you can burn is brush, but you can, stuff you cannot burn is yard waste, leaves, tires, treated lumber, railroad ties, and building material. You can have a three-by-three foot rectifier, that must be twenty-five feet away from any structure. You can only burn trees, lumber, just logs and that in there, you cannot burn leaves or anything else in there. And you can also have a portable outdoor fireplace, and that must be fifteen feet away from any structure. The rectifiers must be attended at all times and extinguished before you go to bed at night. On the open burning, you can check the DNR website to see if it's permitted. As of right now, it is permitted. In a couple of weeks, if we don't get any more rain in that, it starts, stuff starts to dry out, I do expect the burning ban to go back on. We were on, a few days, we had a burning ban earlier. The grass around here is like a one-hour, one-hour fuel, so it takes an hour to dry out before you can start a fire. And that is all I have. I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the council?
How is the grass fire report looking for the spring?
As of right now, it's okay because of all the rain we got. We did have a grass fire earlier in the month, and that was on Highway sixty-five and Viking. And it burnt about two acres in that. But right now, because of the rain and that, we're still going good. As Chief Descharmes used to say, we have to worry about until the green stuff gets higher than the brown stuff.
Any questions from our audience?
Is it possible to get a burning permit online from the city of East Bethel? Because there's no cost to it, is there?
No, there's no cost for a burning permit. Generally, we don't do that because it's a coordination with other agencies and we can, if somebody.
Seems like it would be handy because like where I live down on Coon Lake, it's twenty minutes each way. To go get a burning permit would be.
If we give, we give a burning permit, then sometimes the Fire Department doesn't know or the DNR doesn't know what we can do and what we can't.
At least if I could print it off at my end, then I'd have it there.
We, we can, we can do that, if you give us the information, we can go ahead and do the permit and then we can probably email that to you.
That might be something to put in the East Bethel bulletin, let people know that's an option. Because you want to comply, but if it's forty, you know, an hour round trip, by the time you get out and deal with you guys and all. It's a, a lot of folks are going to say, shoot, I'll be done with the fire before that, you know.
Rodney, whatever happened with the, the DNR was talking about doing permits where a person can go online and you get a permit and it's good for the whole year, is that, is that still?
I could not tell you.
Okay, I know they were talking about that in one of the joint power meetings here about a year or so ago.
Yeah, I haven't talked to them.
And then that permit would be good all year and you just go online through the DNR, pay like five bucks or something, but I don't know where, where it's at, so.
And yeah, right now, the permits being put out right now are a three-day permit and that. But every time, before you start, even though if you have a permit, before you light the fire, you should check the DNR website to make sure permitting is allowed because it does change daily.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number E, public hearing ordinance amendments, MS four permit.
As the city of East Bethel has a population greater than ten thousand, we are federally required to obtain a municipal separate storm sewer system permit for managing non-point source storm water. City of East Bethel has developed a storm water pollution prevention plan as required by the NPDES program, which authorizes the city to discharge storm water to the public water system. The goal of the storm water pollution prevention program is to reduce the discharge of pollutants into receiving waters to the maximum extent practicable. The NPDES permit is issued to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. The city's current permit is attached, is included in attachment one. This permit replaces the previous permit that was in place in twenty thirteen. The expiration date shown on the general permit in attachment one is two years behind the schedule of the twenty thirteen permit due to COVID-related issues. Several code updates are required to comply with the new permit. These were discussed at the last meeting, but this was tabled to get more information. The three codes that require amendments are summarized in your packet below. City Code Chapter Ten Animals, City Code Chapter Sixty-six Subdivisions, City Code Appendix A, Zoning Section Thirty-five, Grading and Filling Excavation, Section Twenty-point-seven, and Section Twenty-point-nine, including Paragraph Seven B two C and Seven B two D. Staff is requesting City Council to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on Amendments, Ordinance Twenty, Twenty-three dash zero-three, Twenty Twenty-three dash zero-five, and Twenty Twenty-three dash zero-six. And at the conclusion of the hearing, discuss this item to consider improvement to those amendments, those ordinance listed. City Engineer is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have regarding any details of these amendments.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak at the public hearing? I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the amendments of changes to ordinance, ordinances, Twenty Twenty-three dash oh-three, ordinance Twenty Twenty-three dash oh-five, ordinance Twenty Twenty-three dash oh-six, Paragraphs Seven B two B four, and Seven B two C as exhibited in attachments two, three, and four.
Here's the motions, your second. I'll second, discussion. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Item F, public hearing, ordinance amendments, SRWMO management plan. Item F, Public Hearing, Ordinance Amendments, SRWMO Management Plan.
The Minnesota Board of Soil and Water Resources coordinates the water and soil resources planning and implementation activities of counties, soil and water conservation districts, watershed districts, watershed management organization, and other local units of government involved in water management. Watershed management organizations are required to prepare, adopt, and implement a watershed management plan in accordance with the requirements of Minnesota Statute Sections One Oh Three B Point Two Oh Five through One Oh Three B Point Two Fifty Five. After the watershed management plan is approved and adopted pursuant to Section One Oh Three B Point Two Thirty-One, the local government units having land use planning and regulatory responsibility for territory within the watershed must prepare a local water management plan, capital improvement program, and official controls as necessary to bring local water management into conformance with the WMO plan. Appendix B of the Sunrise River WMO watershed plans includes regulatory standards for the watershed. These standards are included in Attachment One in the packet. East Bethel is responsible for implementing the official controls to enforce these standards. The two ordinance revisions required to comply with the SRWMO regulatory standards include those amendments to City Code Sixty-Six Subdivision, Article Nine, Wetland Protection, Section Sixty-Six Dash Two Fifty Five regarding buffer strips, and City Code Appendix A, Zoning Section Thirty-Five, Grading, Filling, and Excavation, Part Seven A One and Part Seven B Two G. Staff is requesting that City Council conduct a public hearing to receive comments on Amendments to Ordinance Twenty Twenty Three Dash Zero Four and Twenty Twenty Three Dash Zero Six. And at the conclusion of the hearing, City Council is requested to consider approval of these amendments to these ordinances as exhibited in Attachment Two and Three in your packet respectively. And again, the City Engineer is here to answer any questions you may have regarding any particulars or details to those ordinances.
I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance, ordinance amendments for the SWR-WMR Management Plan. Anybody here like to speak? I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the amendments to ordinances, ordinance Twenty Twenty Three Dash Zero Four, ordinance Twenty Twenty Three Dash Zero Six, Part Seven A One and Part Seven B Two G as exhibited in Attachments Two and Three respectively.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. For the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item G, Public Hearing, Ordinance and Fee Schedule Amendments, Park Dedication Fee.
The current park dedication fees were established by an ordinance revision that was approved on August fifteenth, twenty fifteen. Article Seven, Section Sixty-Six One Ninety-Five of the City Code was amended to include reduction of the not-to-exceed fee for residential park dedication from six thousand dollars to two thousand dollars per lot, exempting one-habitant homestead per subdivision, and reduce the park dedication for commercial industrial development from a not-to-exceed fee of forty-five hundred to two thousand dollars per acre. Within the current ordinance, the city can either elect to acquire dedication of up to ten percent of new residential developments for parkland or receive funds equal to ten percent of the market value of the property prior to development, not to exceed two thousand dollars per lot. For commercial or industrial developments, this is lowered to five percent with a not-to-exceed value of two thousand dollars per acre. These lower fees were adopted to compensate for the higher operations and amortization and water and sewer costs of the city's small customer-based standalone system. Lower park dedication fees were put in place to maintain the competitive balance required to offset the lower SAC and WAC charges of area municipalities. The need to update these fees to meet the demands for park improvements and new facilities were discussed at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Parks Commission Meeting at the Joint City Council Work Meeting and Park Commission Meeting on February fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Based on discussions from both of these meetings and discussions at the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Park Commission Meeting, the Park Commission unanimously recommended moving to a per-unit fee for residential developments. The recommendation included the two thousand dollar per unit fee in new single-family developments and a fifteen hundred dollar per unit fee for new multifamily developments. They also include the recommendation for a fifteen percent unit reduction in multifamily developments that included public recreational facilities. The Parks Commission was aware of the pending litigation at the state level regarding commercial industrial park dedication fees, but recommended making changes to our current policy in conjunction with the residential changes to keep the process easy to understand and consistent. They recommended a per-acre fee of two thousand dollars for new commercial industrial development. Once this case is settled at the state level, the city's fee schedule can be amended to reflect any new requirements. The Park Commission recommended that City Council approve a two thousand dollar per lot park dedication fee for single-family developments, fifteen hundred dollar per unit fee park dedication for multifamily units with a twenty-five percent reduction for those that include recreational facilities available to the public, and two thousand dollar park dedication fee for commercial light industrial developments, and amend the city fee schedule to reflect these changes. These recommended fees would increase park revenues for new developments and be comparable to the fees charged by neighboring cities. The fees would include the city fee schedule and would be reviewed annually and adjusted as deemed appropriate to balance demands for park facilities and improvements with market conditions for development projects. This item was discussed at the City Council meeting on March twenty-seventh and was tabled to enable the preparation of a resolution to approve this recommendation. In addition to Resolution Twenty Twenty Three Dash Thirty-Two to change the fee schedule, revisions to the City Ordinance Sixty-Six Dash One Ninety-Five are required to remove those references to fees based on a percentage of appraised value. Resolution Twenty Twenty Three Dash Thirty-Two and proposed amendments to City Ordinance Sixty-Six Dash One Ninety-Five are exhibited in Attachments One through Three. City staff is requesting that council hold a public hearing to discuss revisions to the ordinance as exhibited in Attachment One and consider approving those changes to City Ordinance Chapter Sixty-Six, Article Seven, Section Sixty-Six Dash One Ninety-Five, Public Land Dedication.
With that, I'll open a public hearing for ordinance and fee schedule amendments. Anybody here like to speak? I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Three Dash Thirty-Two Amendment to the Twenty Thirty, Twenty Twenty Three Fee Schedule, Park Dedication Fees. Is that the only one that we need approved, Jack?
No, yeah, that's, that's, that's correct. That's the resolution, then, then we'll do the amendment to the fee schedule after that.
Okay.
The motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion.
So, which, which recommendation is that, one or two then?
That is one.
That is one?
To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
Recommendation Two, is staff is requesting that council approve Resolution, I'm sorry, approve the Twenty Twenty Three Fee Schedule, Park Dedication Fees to reflect those changes that would align with the fee schedule with revisions to City Ordinance Sixty-Six Dash One Ninety-Five.
Okay, I, I, I think I may have got my motions mixed up. So, my motion was to approve Twenty Twenty Three Dash Thirty-Two Amendment to the Fee Schedule. Uh, so, we would have to approve changes to Ordinance Sixty-Six, Ordinance Chapter Sixty-Six.
Yeah, a- actually, what we need, I'm, I'm sorry, Two. The recommendation on the first one should be to approve Ordinance Twenty Twenty Three Dash O Seven. This is approval of an ordinance, so it'd be different than the fee schedule.
Okay.
So, if you go back and redo that.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three Dash O Seven.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. For the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
And we already have our motion for recommendation Two, so.
Yeah. Did we vote on that one?
Yep, we did.
That's it? Okay, there's, uh, no public forum. Nobody signed up, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
There seems to be a Resolution Twenty Twenty Two Eighty-Six. That's a previous year it's referring to, right? I'm getting lost in all of these documents at this point.
Which one is that under, Kevin?
Twenty Twenty Two Dash Eighty-Six. I see Steve Gloss's signature on it. I'm not sure where this falls in.
Oh, that, that, that was just the fee schedule, just an example, the fee schedule was approved last year. That's not what, that was just an example of the whole fee schedule.
Getting lost in the paperwork here.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second.
Like to, uh, pull item A just for a, a single question.
I'll pull E.
B is a boy.
E isn't.
D is a dog.
No, E is an elephant.
Oh, E, okay. And I'm gonna pull item J, as in John. Anybody else? So, the remaining items on the, uh, consent agenda, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you, you pulled D?
Yeah, D is a dog.
E.
E, E is an elephant.
Okay, I'll pull G.
G?
And I.
And I.
Sorry, you're too quick for me, Tim.
To the remaining, B, C, D, F, and H. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass. Kevin, you're up with A.
Simple question on the, uh, on the bills to be paid. There's a software licensing bill for like ninety-eight hundred dollars. Is that for Ben Uden's company?
Uh, that's a, that's a- That's the Public Service Data System, that's on the Fire Department. That's the annual fee that we pay for our share for the Anoka County Public Service Data System.
Okay, that's not connected with Ben Uden's software business or anything?
No, no.
With that, uh, I move that we approve item A on the consent agenda.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Jim, item E.
E, the ice arena. I met, uh, Nate over there last Friday, and he brought some samples for the new flooring that they're requesting us to approve. And it's some nice flooring, definitely. The flooring that's in there right now is horrible. But I do have just a, two concern, well, one concern anyways. There's a couple of roof leaks over there, and me and Nate, we kinda figured out where they are. And I just wanna make sure that those gets fixed before we put any new flooring in there. But other than that, I mean, it's definitely gonna be an improvement to what's there. It's not a good thing right now. So, I'll make a motion to approve E with getting the roof fixed.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. I'd just like to add on to Jim's, too, that this money on the ice arena, there's no taxpayer money. That's money that is raised from people that rent that ice arena, so, you know, we're, we're putting this money to good use, and we're not using any taxpayer money. With that?
Um, uh, clarification on the motion, was that for the flooring and to get the roof fixed?
Well, just includes, yeah, we wanna get that roof fixed before the flooring goes in.
Yeah, I, I assume we would anyways.
Well, don't ever assume, cause it don't always happen.
Well.
We just gotta make sure it gets done.
Yeah, I'm sure it would get done, so, going back to the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Kevin, item G.
Just a, a quick check on this. It's, it's for, uh, calcium chloride on Klondike Drive, and in another place I saw magnesium chloride, too, I think, maybe. Do you guys ever use Soapstock? Have you ever heard of using Soapstock for dust suppression?
I'm not familiar with that, no.
It's a residue that's left over from the soap manufacturing business in years past in the country. That's what they used to use. It's rendering, basically, and it keeps dust down. Could you check that out, if that's still a product that's available?
Companies that do that, or I've never heard of-
Not off the top of my head, but I haven't researched it.
Yeah, I can look into it.
But it's called Soapstock, and it's just a, a, a soap production or rendering byproduct. And it has a waxy lipid-type consistency that just holds dust to the ground.
Sure.
This is the same stuff, well, well, the magnesium chloride, isn't that what they use to build airport runways?
Uh, I'm not familiar with that. It's the same stuff that's used for, uh, ice melting in the wintertime on concrete.
Oh, that stuff.
It's, uh, comes in a flake usually when we put it, you, the stuff you pick up at Menards for, it's the same material as that. It's a little bit better for the environment.
Maybe it's, maybe it's what I'm getting at is, is inconsequential, but it just seemed like sixty-five hundred bucks for dust suppression for one mile Klondike Road, seem, you know, it's not cheap.
It's getting more and more expensive each year, too.
Yeah, I would say so, yeah. With that, I'll just, uh, move to approve item G on the consent agenda.
Motion made, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. And Kevin, you got item I.
I just had a question about this. This is under the, item I was the, uh, MSA Funds for University Avenue. And in my packet, maybe I'm the guy who got the weird packet or something, it has page after page of engineering draw, drawings that relate to a whole lot of things except University Avenue. It has, it has diagrams for Seventh Street, Washington Street, Two Hundred Thirty-Seventh Avenue, Two Hundred and Thirty-Third Avenue and Taylor Street and Buchanan, Two Hundred and Thirty-First Lane and Buchanan, like everything but University Avenue. I just wonder what, what are the, what am I supposed to be getting out of those diagrams, other than confusion?
I think those diagrams are for item D on the consent agenda.
Street surface improvement projects.
Correct, yep. Those, those are two neighborhoods that we're gonna overlay this summer.
It'd be for item D.
Okay. Well, in that case, if it makes sense to you guys, I'll move that we approve item I on the consent agenda.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second discussion. Nate, how's it, uh, it's gonna be a while on the patching work. I know you only got old Hidden Haven, then, I mean, I think you got a lot left to do.
We've been going nonstop whenever it's not raining or snowing. We've put down a hundred ton of asphalt mix here in the last couple of weeks.
You guys are gonna be on it for a while.
It's gonna be a month or so before we can get through everything. They're working all day, every day on it.
Okay.
There's a lot of them this year.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. I got item J. Jack, you want that one?
Yes. Uh, at our last meeting, on the consent agenda, items A and B were pulled, by Councilmember Lewis, items D, E, F, and G, and H were pulled by Councilmember Smith, and item I was pulled by Mayor Harrington. Councilmember Lewis made a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, but there was discussion prior to the second of the motion. After the discussion, the second to the motion was not made, but the vote was taken on consent agenda items C and J. Although the motion passed unanimously, these items need to be reopened, and a second to the motion made in the consent agenda vote of April tenth, twenty twenty-three for items C and G be retaken.
So, what do we need a motion to?
Yeah, so Kevin, if you could make a motion just to reopen.
I'm still lost in the, uh, maps of this document. Go ahead, what?
What, what we did at the last meeting, we pulled certain items.
Yeah, I caught that part.
Uh, you made a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We approved all those, but in the discussion, even though the motion was made to approve the consent agenda without the pulled items, there was no second to it, cause we got in discussion, and the second was missed. So, what we need to do is approve items C and J of the consent agenda from the April tenth meeting.
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
You like that, Jim?
Motion made, second discussion. The motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. No new business, uh, department reports, IUP extension requests. Mr. Burr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If I can get a switch over here. All right. Uh, the automotive repair business known as B-Rocks Incorporated has been operating at a residential address of six fifty-five one hundred and ninety-eighth Avenue Northeast for approximately eleven years. Back on November eighth of twenty twenty-one, an administrative hearing was held at the city council meeting. Staff was directed to discuss with the planning commission the possibility of amending city zoning code to allow for automotive repair in residential districts as a home occupation. On March seventh of twenty twenty-two, the planning commission and the city council held the joint work session to discuss the possibility of a zoning text amendment, at which time that joint session, it was determined that the code would not be amended to allow for auto repair businesses in residential zone districts. A com- a compliance.
Excuse me?
No problem. Continuing, a compliance and limited enforcement waiver agreement was drafted by the city attorney and fully executed by both parties on May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two to allow for B-Rocks Incorporated to continue operation at his location while in search of a commercial property to relocate his business. The compliance and limited enforcement waiver is scheduled to expire on May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Mr. Verzba is requesting an extension due to his inability to locate a suitable property in which he can relocate his business. I have attachments, the compliance and limited enforcement waiver that was previously executed, uh, the documents outlining the administrative hearing from November eighth. And I'm providing you a location map up on the uh screen for your consideration. Staff is requesting that council discuss the extension request and provide direction to staff in regards to this matter.
Make a motion to approve an extension request for approximately one year from, so for May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion.
Uh, Jack, do you know if there has been progress on uh this individual's um, attempts to find a, a new location?
We had a meeting with Mr. Verzba approximately six weeks ago. He indicated at that time he'd made several attempts to locate property here. He attempted to purchase the uh old Cedar Creek Automotive Building that was operated by another owner. They'd already sold that, so he just says he's having a difficult time finding a place here in East Bethel, so.
All right, that signs, there's been effort made towards it.
There's been activity, yes.
Okay, that's good, that's positive.
I guess I have a question too, it's, I was out at his property today. And it looks like a fine setup the way it is, the neighborhood, and I'm trying to figure out why that planning would say no to him getting another.
At, at the time this was brought up, there were seven complaints from the neighbors. There was actually a complaint made by a little girl that was almost hit by a delivery truck there. Uh, there were numerous complaints about increased traffic and driving at high speeds of the place generated, uh, probably an extraordinary amount of traffic that's normally associated with an IUP. Uh, Mr. Verzba was very cooperative in working with the city and uh, I think there probably are some valid complaints, so uh, the city then decided that they would give him an extension to relocate. And Mr. Verzba has apparently made some efforts to find a new location here, hasn't been successful, so. I guess the year's offer, I think, is reasonable.
Yeah, cause he's been there eleven years, I'm just surprised, but then, okay, so now when we get these complaints, are they written and signed?
Uh, they're not written and signed, but they're made by people who've given their names.
So then, I would suggest that we make a form, a complaint form, and have them fill in the comments and have their signatures. Because a lot of times phone calls can be just a angry neighbor for some reason or whatever. I mean, I was over there and the properties are far apart.
Yeah, one, one of the, one, one of the reasons is too, is this is, this is an illegal activity in this zone. You can't operate an auto uh repair shop in a residential zone.
Okay, you've been doing it for eleven years though.
Well, and, and again, you know, our policy is if there's no complaints, we don't, we don't go after anybody, but there, there were several complaints here. And again, we don't accept anonymous complaints either, they have to be verified.
That's what I mean, they need, need to be legitimate. That's all.
Al to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Item number two, uh, property division and combination, one nine eight four eight, East Bethel Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this one's a little bit more complicated, so uh, I expect there'll be likely some questions unless I've done a really good job here of explaining things, but uh, on June nineteenth of nineteen ninety-six, the city of East Bethel adopted resolution nineteen ninety-six dash thirty and further adopted amended resolution nineteen ninety-six thirty A on October sixteenth of nineteen ninety-six regarding a property division and combination at or near one nine eight four eight, East Bethel Boulevard Northeast. Both re- resolutions are attached for your review. At the conclusion of the division and a, and subsequent real estate transaction, one of the two parcels was intended to be combined with that of its new owner as a condition of the uh approved property division. The condition was due to lack of road frontage and access as required by section sixty-six dash one sixty-three of city code. Uh, lot frontage, all lots must have frontage on a public street. The required frontage is measured at the public right-of-way, and we do not allow for flag lots. Subsequently, the proposed combination request was sent to Anoka County Property Records where it was rejected as a result of the parcels being located in two adjacent watersheds. The new parcel is lo, uh, the new parcel, as a result of the subdivision, was located in the Upper Rum River watershed. While the parcel was to be combined with is located in the Sunrise River watershed. Therefore, resolution nineteen ninety-six three A was adopted and included the provision that the parcels could not be combined and therefore were not allowed to be sold individually without council approval. On April fourteenth of twenty twenty-three, fast forward, the city received a fully executed purchase agreement and property division between uh an applicant and a buyer. Um, the purchase agreement is contingent upon city approval of the division of one nine eight four eight, East Bethel Boulevard and the independent sale of uh the parcel which was uh subject to provisions of not being allowed to be sold without council approval. Let's see, uh, appendix A of the zoning code, section forty-two requires minimum lot regulations. The lot area of two acres with a density not to exceed one unit per two and a half acres. Granting the applicant's request for a division would create a lot below the minimum lot area. However, uh, at the end of the purchase, the buyer who owns a PIN number directly adjacent to it will immediately combine the parcels, creating a larger parcel not to be under the zoning standard. Additionally, in the signed contract, uh, the buyer is proposing to purchase the, the parcel identified in resolution nineteen ninety-six three A as needing approval prior to sale. He also owns an adjacent lot to this parcel and will be required to combine it with that, creating a new, larger parcel, meeting zoning standards. The two newly created parcels, although they are in two different watersheds and cannot be combined, they are adjacent to one another, eliminating the ordinance requirement for lot frontage. The division and subsequent combinations will leave the applicant with a four-point-six-six acre parcel at one nine eight four eight, East Bethel Boulevard, which meets all minimum lot standards outlined by city code and eliminates the restrictions identified in resolution nineteen ninety-six three A. Staff is recommending council approve the lot division and a subsequent combination of a one-point-seven acre lot with conditions set forth in resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. And additionally, staff recommends approving the independent sale of the parcel identified in nineteen ninety-six dash three A um, with conditions set forth in resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five. The conditions, if you will, are that if this uh sale were to fall through, the applicant would not be allowed to sell that parcel separately or independently without seeking council approval at that point. And the other condition is that both parties will immediately file uh at the conclusion of their real estate transaction, the separation documents and the combination documents that would um alleviate the lot uh zoning size issue. So on the uh wall on the map, I have the parcels lined out. Uh, I'll try and explain quickly here with this. All right, this is one nine eight four eight, East Bethel Boulevard. The applicant is pro- proposing to split off one-point-seven-four acres of this parcel and sell it to the owner of this large T-shaped parcel, and immediately that would be combined. Additionally, this parcel back here was the one identified in nineteen ninety-six dash thirty A as not being allowed to be sold separately because it didn't have road frontage. The, the uh owner here and buyer is the owner and buyer of this, also owns this lot and is the buyer here. Therefore, when he owns all three of these and this fourth one in combination, the lot, it has road frontage and it meets our zoning standard.
Well done.
Thank you.
Good job, man.
It was, it was very convoluted when all of it was coming my way and I was trying to figure out how to properly explain it so that it made sense with all of the nuances that come with zoning standards and lot frontage and two different watersheds and, yeah.
It's a complicated way of saying, of saying we're changing a couple lines.
Correct. And somebody's exchanging money that we don't get any part of yet.
Yeah.
We'll get a motion, and I, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Is there a motion on the?
Just to give you a break, um, I'll ma- I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. Approving the administrative lot split for PIN two-two-three-three-two-three-three-four-zero-zero-zero-two at one nine eight four eight, East Bethel Boulevard.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. You know, you're talking two watersheds, where is the other water, where is the watersheds on there?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's kinda different, that two are like that.
This is, this is new information to me, but, so the, this line here that I'm tracing with the um laser pen is the division line between the Rum River watershed.
The Upper Rum.
Upper Rum River watershed, and on the other side, this is the Sunrise.
Wow.
So, when this was sent to the county for combination, they said you can't do that because the watershed line runs right here and they're both taxed differently.
Yep.
Therefore, it can't be the same parcel.
Okay.
So when uh all of this is said and done and all the combinations are done, the landowner here will own land in both watersheds, but it's a nice clean line compared to what we have going on right now. And it's will allow the owner of one nine eight four eight to be able to sell this land, non-landlocked parcel uh off so that he can um, I guess, work with other real estate transactions on the house that's also for sale on the front end there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
To the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Thanks, Eric.
You've got a second one there? Twenty-three dash twenty-five, which is the approval of the independent sale of that lot which was uh restricted by that amendment resolution in nineteen ninety-six.
Is there a motion for?
I'll make a motion for the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, one nine eight four eight, East Bethel Boulevard Northeast to approve.
Motion made, second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Now I can say thank you again, Mr. Burr.
Thank you.
Eight G one, May two, twenty twenty-three work meeting agenda.
Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for Monday, May first, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. The following items are recommended for discussion. City council minute discussion, discussion of a conduit bond issue proposal for a potential Canby Hills purchaser. A Sunrise River WMO compromise agreement that would include some different proposals from Columbus and Linwood. And I'd like to add a fourth one on there, is that's the review of the Roads and Parks Capital Improvement Program so we can get those ready for the twenty twenty-four budget discussion. And any other items that council would like to add.
I would like to add something, uh, I would like to add a discussion about the storage containers. I don't have the exact ordinance in my head, but I'll have that for you quickly.
Somebody wanna make a motion for, to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve our work agenda.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there a discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you have your work meeting, Jack.
Thank you.
Um, town hall meeting agenda.
Our spring town hall meeting is scheduled for April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. The format for the meeting is as follows. Six to seven P M is an informal session in the senior center with council, elected officials, guests, and staff. At seven-ten, we'll convene to council chambers with opening remarks from the mayor. Seven-fifteen, we'll have updates by elected officials, Julie Brassstedt and Cal Barr. And seven-thirty, we'll have general questions and answers for residents in the council chambers. Also represented from the Anoka County Highway Department and the Anoka County Blaine Airport Commission will be present at the six to seven P M informal session for any questions residents may have regarding their services. City council is requested to approve the agenda for the spring town hall meeting.
I'll move that we approve the agenda for the spring town hall meeting.
Motion made, second discussion. No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda for the town hall meeting. Temporary ACO contract.
The city's contract kennel facility for impound and quarantine dogs, Animal Humane Society of Coon Rapids, was identified with a canine influenza in one of their shelters. This was reported to Minnesota Board of Animal Health, and their facility will be closed for a period of four to eight weeks, which began April sixth, twenty twenty-three, to isolate the infection. In the interim, the city needs to temporarily contract this service with another provider. The nearest facility that meets their requirements is the Isani County Animal Control Facility in Ogilvy, Minnesota. We did find the service in North Branch, but they only take dogs during normal business hours, Tuesday through Saturday, and would not accept dogs that were quarantined for bite incidents. Attached in detachment one is a proposed service contract from Isani Animal Control. Uh, this contract was reviewed by the city attorney. Uh, as far as the physical impact, the city will only incur charges should dogs be taken to the Isani County Animal Control and not claimed by the owner. Costs for this service and conditions of the contract are exhibited in attachment one. The owner did come back and say there was one additional cost that would need to be included in there that's not in there. And if he had to come to East Bethel to pick up charge- And if he had to come to East Bethel, the pickup charge would be one thirty five. What's proposed is a meeting point somewhere in Isani or Cambridge. So the pickup cost for an animal would range from a hundred to a hundred and thirty five dollars. With this, staff recommends city council approve a temporary contract for the services with Isani Animal Control. To provide impound and quarantine kenneling for a term of ninety days.
Do we have the contract in our packet? The only thing I'm seeing is a uh insurance policy.
It was supposed to be in there, but uh I can pull it up, I believe, real quick if you'd like to look at it online. Uh, or.
Have you seen by outs have it in their packet? I just downloaded mine.
That's what I have.
Okay.
Same as you. Apparently that did not get included. I apologize for that.
It happens.
Just one moment. If you'd like, I can present this out and give you a quick handout. Obviously, that'll be an easier way for you to take a look at it.
Um, I would say just give us the uh, the Cliff Notes of it, I guess.
Uh, you know, it's the basic boilerplate language of a contract. I think the most important things in there. Are the contract price, which calls for a hundred dollars for call out fee. Uh, at the current I R S rate per mile for the actual mileage incurred. The drop off will be by members of the Anoka County Deputy Department, deputy, deputies. Uh, there'll be a thirty dollar boarding fee per day for the dog. The boarding fee will be charged and billed to the city if the owner is not found and the dog is not claimed with the fifth day of impound. And extra services such as animal fees for a search warrant. Now, the ordinary circumstances will be arranged between the city and contractor on a case by case basis. Uh, this outlines the contractor shall have one to two hours to respond to a call. From the county and have up to four hours for a pickup of the animal. Uh, given the distance, that's probably not unreasonable. Gives the process for reclaiming the animal by the owners. Any owner that goes to pick up an impound dog will pay for all costs associated picking up and boarding the dog. Uh, and this eliminates the city from paying any of those fees. Uh, the city should provide the contractor with appropriate conditions and identification. To identify the animal control official for the city of East Bethel, we'll have to provide them with an incident case report so they can track the animal. Uh, they agree to indemnify us and hold the city harmless against all claims and losses and causes of actions expenses. Legal expenses arriving out of and relative contractors performance of this contract. They will provide insurance in the amount of one million dollars per occurrence. And comply with Data Practices Act. Termination of contract will be within thirty days by either party. This is a temporary contract will be effective for ninety days. And essentially, that's the nuts and bolts of it. Kevin, do you have anything to add on that? Or Eric, I'm sorry.
Um, uh, city administrator, uh, no, you uh, you hit the points exactly. Um, obviously, the terms and conditions as far as the price and services are very important. And on the legal side, I did review and make sure that the legal protections and provisions are contained within this contract. Therefore, uh, for the city attorney, it's been reviewed and approved and now it's a, has to do with the business items, um, that is before this particular body.
I, I do have one question on the term as. Uh, this is a temporary course and hopefully this uh canine influenza runs its course. Uh, if. For, so we, we, this contract is for ninety days. If we do not need that full ninety days. We have to give them thirty days notice.
Yeah, or we just let it expire. If we don't use their services, there's no charge.
Okay. But, but we're not, under those ninety days, are we contracted to use them exclusively?
No.
If, if the canine in- influenza should uh. Somehow get better really quick and um. And uh Coon Rapids opens back up within that ninety day span, we can go back to using Coon Rapids?
We're, we're only contracted for them if we request their service.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Jack.
There was a motion made, right?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve this uh temporary contract. For service with Isani Animal Control for a term of ninety days.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
Staff reports.
I have nothing further to add.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, I, I got a couple of things here. I attended the E D A meeting on the seventeenth. And when it came to the staff reports, Jack had stated, well, towards the end of his uh statements. That we have some good news about Cambia Hills. That uh, we have a buyer interested and we're in the final stages of putting that all together. Well, that was news to me. I've never heard anything about that.
It just broke.
What's that?
The news is just broken, that's.
So everything is in process?
Well, the process for the city is that we're going to discuss the conduit bond issue at the work meeting. The uh receiver has announced that this outfit Nexus wants to purchase the facility. And this is the breaking of the news.
So then you break it at E D A without letting any of the other council members know anything about it? I mean, shouldn't you have known about this?
I thought everybody did know about it.
How do we know?
We had had.
I thought you made the comment at the last meeting, Jim, that you said something about Cambia Hills, that everybody should be involved in these meetings, so you must have known about it.
I didn't know anything about this, that we have.
You made the co- you made the comment about it.
Well, weren't you there when the uh, the superintendent was here?
The school superintendent, yeah, correct.
And now we got a letter as of three this morning, basically going against everything that you guys have said.
Well, what, from what we've said, we've, we've done our part. The school district thing is a separate thing. If they can't work that out.
So I guess my thought is, is who authorized you and Tim Harrington to act on our behalf?
Well, Kevin was there too.
No, no.
Kevin was at one meeting.
Yeah.
Let, let, let.
But I mean, isn't, aren't we supposed to do this all together?
We are, but nobody, we didn't authorize anything. We had a preliminary meeting with the school chairman. And the school district superintendent at their request. And we told them that there were some discussions going on about Cambia Hills and we would keep them posted. So with that, they said they would like to come to city council and basically present. What some of their plans were, how they wanted to work with the city. And we said there may be some questions about Cambia Hills that come up. So that's all, we, we never authorized anything. We just informed them of some things going on.
I've had a lot of complaints from people just from the E D A meeting calling me saying, what's going on? This is all a done deal?
No, it's not a done deal.
Right, but I mean, just from your comments, the way they took it, and I did too, is like, this is in the final process, we're moving forward.
No, the, this, this is still preliminary. I mean, I didn't say, I said, the good news is that they're reopening. But there's a potential buyer, but there still has to be a lot of things still worked out. The devil's in the detail.
Oh, big time.
Yeah.
But I mean.
There was a, there was a, a real question in my mind also, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's right.
But you actually did say the best news of all, negotiations are in the final phase of discussion and we should be announcing. You know, this, that if, that we have a deal in the next couple of weeks. That's where I was confused also, because I was like, wait a minute, we just heard about this.
I, I.
Best news of all.
I assumed that was between the receivership and the uh interested party that was purchasing it. That their con- that their talks among themselves were at the final stages.
That, that's correct and it's all contingent too on what the city decides on this conduit bond issue, which will be discussed next Monday. And also on what they can work out with the school district.
Alright, but you can see the confusion. If we're sitting here watching this, then all of a sudden the best news is coming out. And it's in the final phases and we're going to announce it. You can see where we might, you could say, hey, wait a minute, what's going on here, final phases of this, we're going to announce it, and we're sitting here going, oh, we just heard about it.
No, I, I can see where there may be some confusion. If I misspoke, I apologize.
I think, I think it's really, please redouble your efforts when you have meetings with you and Tim or something like that. To inform all of us A S A P.
We certainly.
I think that'll avoid a lot of this, is just feeling, I had, I was in that meeting with you too.
That's the only meeting I've been in.
And I also was surprised by what I heard when I watched the E D A meeting. It was like, oh, well, it's, you know, I didn't know about that. So I think that's probably what we're really getting at is, please redouble your efforts to make sure we're all in the same loop. At the same time on every point.
Will do.
Appreciate it.
Then I also got something on the closed session that it sticks in my mind. And I'm kind of curious about that. When we went to that, it was about Ms. Gimble and her lawsuit against the city. And I guess what concerns me is that you and Tim Harrington went to a mediation. At that, and we didn't know anything about this at all. I mean, don't you think that we should be informed about this?
We were after it was over. I mean, there wa- there wasn't anything to really report. They asked us to come to mediation, we had no input in it. We reported, that's why we had the closed session.
But I'm trying to think here now, the way our city, if I understand it right, should be ran by the council. That means all of us, and you work for us.
Absolutely.
So I just want to make it clear, because it bugs me when things are going on. And we get secondhand information on it after the fact that it's done. I mean, like I said before, I've said it before, is like, let us know what's happening. That's all I'm asking you. So if you have any questions about it, ask them.
Ditto.
Got it.
Then uh also, December twelfth, when we met in the other room there, myself, Tim Miller. And Kevin Lewis, we had talked about, we were going to get key cards. For the buildings and codes and stuff like that, and we haven't got anything. Is there a reason?
Generally, the key cards, and I don't know if you want key cards to everything. If you do, all you gotta do is direct me to do it, here, here at the council.
Directing you to do it.
Is there?
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we have key cards access to all the buildings that the city owns for inspection purposes.
How do we qualify that? Because I don't want key cards for all of them.
Well, I mean, don't we have a key card that opens most of the buildings?
Those, some, I mean, qualify it so those who want it can get them.
Oh, okay.
I don't care to have.
I don't want, right?
Or whoever don't want them.
Yeah, but if you, if a commit.
Yeah, Tim, do you want to?
Council member wants them, that, yeah.
That's fine.
So, like a key card opens most of the buildings, don't they?
There's different key cards for each system.
Okay. Whatever it takes, because my thought is, I want to inspect these buildings just to take a look at them myself. On my own time, I don't want to have to take staff or employees and waste their time. You know what I mean? I just want to check the maintenance out just to see what it looks like. That's why. So I made a motion. Got a second?
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
So are we clear with what I was requesting? Okay.
So the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Got it, Jim?
That's all I got.
Jim?
I have nothing.
Brian?
Uh, E D A meeting. Other night, we had a wonderful presentation by Christine Costello. Uh, she is the Canexus Energy uh Community Engagement Individual. Uh, she replaced Bruce Saylor. As the, the representative. Uh, Bruce was a really great guy and uh from Christine's presentation. I think she will do a very good job as well. Uh, we talked about uh including her and Canexus in with the future B R and E efforts. And she was, would be very interested in uh assisting with that. Um, at the, I think it's at the next uh E D A meeting. We will be having representatives from the U of M, Jack. That will be further discussing uh the B R and E and hopefully by uh sometime in June. We should have uh all the players involved and can develop, develop a roadmap of. Where to go with the B N R E program. So uh otherwise.
Business retention and expansion?
Yes, yes. Yep, otherwise, uh, I believe it's this Sunday for highway cleanup, Tim?
Yep, eleven o'clock. Sign up with the auxiliary, they're on, they got something on Facebook, so.
Yeah, with Fire Department Auxiliary, they'll be uh doing highway cleanup from two twenty first up to two thirty seventh.
Yep.
Uh, meet at eleven o'clock at Saint Andrews Church if anyone is interested in volunteering and helping them out. And that is all I have.
Okay. Kevin?
I'm good.
I'm done too. I don't have anything, uh, one last.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
We got H R O meeting.
H, well.
Yeah, we do.
Somebody else is in charge.
We're not.
Are we ready to start?
Yes.
Okay. I'll call, call the order tonight's uh Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting of April twenty fourth, fourth, twenty twenty three.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have our agenda. I am number three, approving minutes from October twenty fourth.
I'll prove the minutes from October twenty fourth as written.
Need a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. I have number four, H R A financial update. Jack.
Thank you, Brian. For Minnesota State Statute four sixty nine point zero three three subdivision six. The East Bethel H R A must prepare and file a budget in accordance with the budget procedure of the city. The H R A approved a budget levy amount of seventy seven thousand dollars for twenty twenty three. To ensure the continued legal status of the H R A as a standalone authority and to provide H R A funds for eligible projects. Staff is proposing the same levy amount for twenty twenty four preliminary budget discussions. The maximum statutory levy for an H R A is point zero one eight five percent of the previous year's estimated market value. Of all property in the city. The twenty twenty three estimated market value of all property in the city was one billion. Seven hundred fifty two million, one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred dollars. Which would enable the maximum levy of three hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty four thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars. The H R A staff services for twenty twenty three have been funded by thirty. The H R A staff services for twenty twenty three have been funded by a thirty thousand dollar transfer from the H R A account to the city general fund. To support the administrative duties, staff time and other responsibilities required of the H R A. This transfer has been completed and is reflected in the H R A fund balance. The uncharted H R A cash account in the balance as of three thirty one twenty three was a hundred and fifty six thousand, nine hundred and thirty nine dollars. Tax settlement revenue will be distributed to the H R A in July and December of twenty twenty three. The H R A cash balance at the end of the year is projected to be two hundred and thirty three thousand, nine hundred and thirty nine dollars, given no other budget expenditures occur. The H R A levies is separate and apart from the general fund. Staff is seeking direction for approval of an H R A levy amount to include in the preparation of the preliminary twenty twenty four budget in the amount of seventy seven thousand dollars.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of the H R A levy amount of seventy seven thousand to include in the preparation of the preliminary twenty twenty four city budget.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We, uh, just have one more, I am.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.